Hello and welcome to Portsmouth This Week. I'm your host, Con Lizzani. This show is under the auspices of Rich Rayner, our Portsmouth Town Administrator. Together, Rich, myself, and the entire Portsmouth This Week team are on a mission to build community. We do that by bringing you accurate and timely information about the issues and events that impact you. We introduce you to the faces, the personalities, the leaders in this magical place in which we live. I'm so excited today to have as my guest Jim Knott, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Review. How are you, Jim?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you. I hear that this is the first ask that we've had of the zoning board to come on the show.
It is.
And I've been challenged. People are like, "Zoning board?" I was like, "It's going to be an exciting show." I loved talking to you yesterday about what we wanted to cover. And I cannot believe the stories that you have. It's quite amazing. So let's just start with you sharing a little bit about yourself and how you even got into this.
Well, as we spoke yesterday, I was raised here in Portsmouth. First part of my life was up on Freeborn Street. My dad was military. He retired here. Eventually, my parents bought a house down on Imola Drive, so pretty much in the center of town. My father was very involved in the town, always believing in giving back. He was on various building committees. And as I got older, I said, "I watched the town begin to change from a farming community," because we grew up working on farms, "and it was morphing into something different."
Describe what it used to look like to you in your mind's eye.
Well, no matter where I lived, whether it was on Imola Drive or Freeborn Street, there was a farm right there. And as even a very small child, I remember going to Pecho's farm on Freeborn Street to help him feed the chickens. And as you got older, you got a job up on Chase's farm up on East Main Road, where you'd go work in the fields before you could actually go out and get a job and make money.
And you were running through fields to visit friends.
Absolutely. We played in the fields. That's what we did.
And there was a kind of a bit of a town center from your perspective?
There was a town center at the time. Some people to this day are surprised to hear that where Bank Newport is now was a Howard Johnson's, the original white Howard Johnson's with the spire on the top.
So I didn't know that. I only got here in '09.
Oh, yeah. There was the original Howard Johnson's there. And then right in that area right there was a Sunoco gas station, which is where the chair cushion place is. But along that whole little strip that's right there, there was Gleason's Package Store, there was a Dry Cleaners, there was a place called Sherman Spa. Sherman Spa was your...
Little soda shop.
Yeah, a little sundry soda shop. You could get the newspaper, and there was a soda fountain there.
And that's where people were hanging out.
Right. There was no Cumberland Farms or convenience stores. You went to Sherman Spa. And then just down from that was Burke's Bakery. The town had a bakery.
So cool.
It was. And just beyond that, towards the end was, to give you an idea of how it was, it was Peckham's Feed Store and Washburn's Hardware Store. That's what was there.
Everything you needed right there.
And across the street, where the People's Credit Union is, was the First National, the grocery store. So we had a town center years ago, and that was it.
And then things changed a little bit, right?
Things changed over time. Route 24 was built. I can remember when that was being built, because it took up some of the fields we used to play in. They put the on-ramp to 24 off of Turnpike Avenue, which diverted a lot of traffic from East Main Road, where Mindy's Restaurant is nowadays. But that whole area, which there was Chase's Meat Market and things like that, so you diverted it all away from a lot of the retail sales.
This whole change thing that you're describing here is part of why you got into this, right?
Exactly. Exactly. I started looking for ways that, although I knew I couldn't change what was happening, keep it the way it is, maybe I could have a say in how it's being developed, or being developed and also keep the character of the town. So that's how I got into it.
Change is inevitable.
Absolutely.
But can you have that positive impact on those changes?
You can. You can. You absolutely can.
So it's been 25 years for you?
No, it'll be 24 years.
24? Okay, close. I'm calling that a quarter century. That's amazing.
Two different terms. I first got on in 1997 and stayed on until 2010.
Okay.
Then I stepped away.
And why did you step away?
I was chairman in the last six years of that stretch, and it began to impact my family. We had people knocking on the door at dinnertime to try to talk to me about certain things in town, and it just became overwhelming. So I said, "I have to step away."
Right, right, right. And that's not happening anymore, right?
No, no, no.
People have to go online, find the Zoning Board of Review, and fill out a form now. It's not go to Jim Knott's door and be like, "Can I talk to you?"
Or any other member for that matter. Even if they run into you, the simple answer is save it for the meeting, write a letter, send an email to the Planning Department, to the Zoning Board, and we'll address it at a meeting.
Right, right, right. Okay, so things, you had to step away just to take a breath.
Stepped away.
But then you couldn't resist coming back.
Well, when I was on the board, there was a gentleman by the name of John Borden. John has been very instrumental in this town. John was on the board when I got out there on the first time, and he stepped away about a year or two before I stepped away. He went on to push the town for the Design Review Board.
Which is what?
Which governs the design standards for how commercial buildings will be built in the town. And it was in hopes of keeping the rural character as best you can. So rather than put up a space metal building that could go in any industrial park, you would get something similar to what Garrett Castro just built down the road on the Borden Farm.
Yeah, I was going to ask, for example, right there on East Main, right?
Right there on East Main. In days of old, it would be this big metal thing, and now you look and you see, well, it resembles an older barn or has barn characteristics.
Yeah, it looks pretty cool. So we have John to thank for that.
We do have John to thank for that. So John got the design review up and running, and then we got to, he went back on the zoning board. And I ran into him one day, and I said, "Why? Why did you go back?" And he said, "You're going to find out that you're going to miss it." And he was right. He was absolutely right. And it came a point where the zoning board couldn't get members. There's a, the board consists of five regular members and two alternates.
And you're all volunteers. Let's just be clear.
We're all volunteers, no.
It's a little thankless. It's just intrinsic. I hear you. You're intrinsic.
It's thankless if you want it to be thankless. If you believe you're making a positive impact, then it's not thankless.
There you go. That's why you've been with us for 24 years. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So they were short. They couldn't get people, and I threw my name back in and back. I was there, and here I am, another 10 years later.
So you must have seen some crazy in the time that you've been. Let's talk about some fun memories. What stands out?
So two come to mind. It's sad in a way, but it gives people an idea of some of the things you don't expect. And one was a poor gentleman on Prudence Island who had lost his wife. And they were longtime residents of Prudence Island. And all he wanted to do was bury his wife in his backyard.
Oh, okay.
Exactly.
Well, that's an unusual request, right?
So at the time, Mr. Madeiras, God rest his soul, who was the Building Inspector and the Zoning Enforcement Officer, didn't know how to handle that. So he kind of said, "You probably want to go before the board." And we're like, "Okay." And he came before, and he told us his wife's story and his wife's wishes. And whenever you hear a petition, you don't just hear the petitioner. You hear abutters or interested parties, people who are not part of the petition but may be impacted by it. So we asked for them. So this one woman who lived next door got up, and her only concern was she didn't want to look at a gravestone. Other than that, she had no problem with it.
She was cruel. Just don't let me see it.
So that was a different one. I'll save my best one for last. And another one was, and I believe again it was on Prudence Island, not too many years ago, that they wanted to put a natural cemetery in.
Now... What does that mean?
It means you bury people naturally, i.e. there's no casket, there's no vault, there's nothing.
There's a body in the ground.
There's a body in the ground.
Okay, then.
I always thought, as did most people...
Good fruit in silence. I love it.
As did most people, that you had to be buried in a coffin and that put in a concrete vault, and that's put into the ground. But we found out that that wasn't true. That was up to the cemetery.
Okay, so you had to do some research on this, clearly.
A cemetery dictates how it's going to be. And we found out that Swan Point Cemetery in Providence has a natural section where you can be buried strictly...
Who knew?
Who knew? You know?
The things that you read across.
But my favorite "what were you thinking" moment was when Louis Escobar wanted to put in his corn maze.
Okay. That was a while ago, huh?
That was a long time ago, very long time ago. And Louis had talked again to, I think, Mr. Madeiras at the time. And again, it was one of these, "Well, you are a farm, but it's a business, and we're not sure which way to go. You may want to err on the side of caution and apply for a special use permit to run the business." Okay. So Louis comes before the zoning board, and he presents what they want to do. And at the time, it was, I think, the only corn maze in the state. It was new. This was something new.
And so people were excited. Like, the board was like, "That's cool."
We thought it was wonderful. You're saving the farmland. The farmer gets to generate more money. The crop is being used for silage for the cows when it's all done. And again, the testimony's all done. We asked for abutters and interested parties, and this woman gets up, stands at the microphone, and she's completely opposed to this.
Why?
And I asked her that question. I says, "Well, ma'am, why? Why are you so adamantly opposed?" And she had just moved into one of the newer neighborhoods, abutting the property.
Okay, so she's in a abut.
And her response was, "Well, you know, when I purchased my home, the field abutting me was full of grass and wildflowers and all of that, and it was such an idyllic setting that that's why I purchased my home. And now it may be part of a corn maze." And I looked at her, and I said, "Ma'am, you moved next to a farm. What did you expect a farm to do? If you know anything about farming, farmers let fields go fallow so that they can regenerate themselves, and then they plant later." I said, "You're lucky Mr. Escobar doesn't have his cows running around down there, or we could be having a different conversation right now."
Well, what did she do?
She just had the blank stare in her face and was a little disgusted and walked away.
Well, so this gets to an important point about views.
Right.
Like, you don't get, you don't have rights to a view.
One of the biggest misconceptions for a lot of people in this town, probably for anywhere, is that views, and you're correct, views are not rights. There's nothing in a zoning...
You feel like they should be a right, but they're not.
There's nothing in a zoning ordinance or anything. And we see it many, many times now, where you take some of the old neighborhoods on sloping hills overlooking the Sconnet River. And they may at the time have been single-story ranch houses, and somebody comes along, buys it, and they want to renovate it. They want to put a second story on it. You want to put a second story, and now the house that's uphill from you, you're going to block their view of the Sconnet River. And the abutters come, and they're totally opposed to this. "They're going to block my view." Well, unfortunately, views are not rights. We can't take it into consideration or anything like that. And whether it's a commercial building, whether it's another house in addition, they're not rights, and it's a big misconception people have.
Yeah, which gets me to almost anything that comes before you. There are people that are liking your decision. There are people that are not liking your decision, right? So that's tricky.
It's very tricky.
I feel like you have to have a particular kind of temperament to do this job.
You have to be objective. You have to do your research. You have to be very open-minded, and you can't go in with any preconceived notions. And that's easy to say.
Hard to do? Easy to say?
Very hard to do, and you don't always do it. But it's amazing how your, any preconceived notion you have can be flipped in a heartbeat.
Example?
Nothing I can think of right off the bat.
Fair.
But it does happen.
But that's important.
It does happen. And yes, there are people that are adamantly opposed. There are a handful of individuals, and I will say this, in this town who have been adamantly opposed to many things.
To kind of everything? I think I know who some of those individuals are.
It always seems to be the same individuals. The irony to that is whenever there's been an opening on something like the zoning board, planning board, design review, you never see their names on the application list. The opportunity for you to go ahead and sit on a board and make that controversial decision, because you have to abide by the ordinance, not what your heart tells you. And that's hard.
That is really hard.
So to those people that might watch this, I challenge them. If there's ever an opening on one of these boards, take a risk. Throw your name in. Get up there. Make a difference.
Yeah. Now, how does one, like, you throw your name in. Is there an interview process, or how extensive is the application process? I imagine you don't want just anybody. I don't know.
You don't. And you don't have to be, you don't have to be an engineer, or an architect, or a landscape. You have to have common sense. You have to have common sense and a love for your community. That's what you have to have. Whenever there's an opening on one of, like, the zoning board or the planning board, the zoning board in particular, five members with two alternates. An alternate would take the place of a regular member if there was a controversy or they didn't make a meeting. But it's also, I like to term it as an apprenticeship, because not everybody, you know, when I first got in, I didn't know anything about zoning. But you learn quick.
Right.
And you do that time. And as people leave, you begin to sort of move up to your regular member and so on and so forth. And that's how it works. So that's why people will be on these boards for a while, but every once in a while, something in life comes along, and you step away. In the past, it's always been two or three people will just throw their name in, and the council, for lack of a better term, just approve someone. I would love to see a process, especially for the zoning board, possibly the planning board too. You know, Leah and Aaron in the planning board do an outstanding job up there. Leah and I have spoken about this. In the future, if there's openings, we would like to see, before the council even appoints anyone, gather a few names, have an interview process, let them meet with a member of the zoning board, planning board, and the town planner, and maybe somebody from the council, and pick the right person. Pick the right person who's got the welfare of the town of Portsmouth in their mind.
Yeah, that's right. So you work hand-in-hand with Leah and Aaron from the planning department, right? Many conversations, I'm sure. I think they're in a process. I know we just did our comprehensive plan. Right. And they're in the process now of making sure all the ordinances align with that plan. Is that fair to say?
Right. The zoning ordinance has to jive with the comprehensive community plan. Comprehensive community plan comes first, then zoning ordinance. And there's been a number of new statewide zoning regulations that have been passed down.
Right. So the state has things to say to Portsmouth, and then Portsmouth...
Tweaks them.
Tweaks them for Portsmouth.
For Portsmouth, absolutely.
Okay, which is what we've just done, and now we're trying to...
Similar to like when the town enacted what they called the town center, in hopes of eventually bringing a town center back, which I don't think will ever happen. So they may have to get rid of that town center designation, because it does curb certain things from being constructed, built, or put in that area.
Oh, interesting.
So, yeah.
Well, let's talk about the comprehensive plan and some of the new rules of the state and what you're seeing as maybe new or something that our viewers might be interested in or shocked by or surprised by.
It's not the comprehensive plan. It's the zoning regulation. So two of them come to mind right off the bat. And one is, what's short-termed as an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit.
Is this like a mother-in-law apartment?
That's what we used to call them.
An in-law apartment? Okay, all right.
Well, the state passed regulations in January that any lot that's 20,000 square feet or larger can automatically have an accessory dwelling unit, provided that it meets the normal setback requirement. And I believe the initial concept was, is for aging parents or maybe handicapped children or something to that effect. What they failed to do, and hopefully they will change it, is they didn't limit it to family.
So if you think about this... Or if we get into commercial Airbnb kind of stuff.
Well, people right now could put an accessory dwelling unit on and rent it out as an Airbnb. And I think there's a lot of people who'd be surprised to find that out.
Yeah, and that's going to create some drama.
I hope there's legislation in the works to retweak that.
Okay, interesting.
The other is they've now changed setback and lot coverage requirements for substandard lots of record. So when a substandard lot...
Smaller lots?
Smaller lots.
Common fence point, right here. You're looking at her.
Common fence point and Island Park are the two that come right to mind immediately. So for simple math and simple terms, an R-10 zone...
Which is how I think we're zoned in Common Fence Point, yeah.
Right. 10,000 square foot lot. Well, many of the lots in Common Fence Point or Island Park can be 5,000, 6,000, 4,000 square feet. Days of old, it was 20% lot coverage max, and let's say, for the sake of math, you had to have a 10-foot side yard setback on each one. Well, it used to be you'd have to come before the board for a variance. Now, what the state has said is, "No, it has to be a sliding scale here." In other words, you have a substandard lot of record in R-10. So it used to be it was required 10,000 square feet. You're a substandard lot. You only have 5,000 square feet. So it's 50%. Well, now you can have 50% lot coverage instead of 20%, and your side yard setbacks now only have to be five feet, not 10 feet.
So it's a percentage of, if I'm 5,000 of 10,000, that's half, so my setback's half of the...
Right.
Wow. That's new.
That's new.
That's really new.
That's really new.
And that's going to shake things up.
That's going to shake a lot of things up, because it can be done, you know? So people may be surprised to find out a neighbor put an addition on that. All of a sudden, they think it's too close to their property line, but it meets the new regulations.
It's okay right now.
The one thing they have done, which is beneficial to the board, is they've now allowed the planning department or the zoning enforcement officer to administratively approve certain variances versus having to come to the full board. Perfect, for instance, house not on a public way on Prudence Island. Prudence Island hasn't had a public way since Roger Williams, okay? And they're never going to. But anybody that wanted to do anything had to come before the board. So now they can administratively approve it. Has to be advertised, so the abutters know. But it can be administratively approved.
So they're removing...
A lot of that, you know, things that people had to do in the past.
That's nice.
And if anybody does have an issue with it, then it just gets remanded to the board for a regular hearing.
Okay. Oh my gosh. So this is kind of constantly changing.
Always.
So you're constantly on a learning curve. I have gleaned that.
Constantly.
And let's talk, we probably only have time for one more topic to hit.
There is one more.
The technology?
The technology.
Yes. Look at you and me arcing. Oh my goodness.
I'm telling you.
Let's talk about it.
So, you know, in rewriting the ordinance, one of the hardest things Leah and Aaron are going to have to do is how do you predict the future when you're writing an ordinance? When our ordinance was written, there was no such thing as wind turbines or solar farms, and here they are.
Yes, so tell your Qualcomm story.
But this goes back to many years ago, shortly after I was on the board, okay? And a company called Qualcomm, which many people will know the term, came before the board, and they wanted to erect an antenna.
Years and years and years ago.
Years and years and years ago, because this new cell technology was coming out. And this cell technology, and to this day, it's embedded in my brain. The Qualcomm engineer is trying to explain to us that, you know, someday in the future, everyone could have a phone that you don't keep in your house. You take everywhere with you.
And you guys are like, "That's science fiction."
We're like, "Is George Orwell writing this? There's no way that's going to happen." And here we are, 2024, and not only do I have my cell phone, I've got my personal computer. I've got everything. And that was just a thought way back when.
And so what was your verdict on that?
Oh, we absolutely approved it.
You were like, "Let's do it."
Well, we approved it, sure. But it's just so funny to watch that change. But again, it goes back to you can't predict the future.
Yeah, so link it to the reality right now. So I hear you. You can't predict. So how are you managing this, or how are you and Leah and Aaron, and clearly probably the building, our building department too? Everybody's involved in this.
What I've loved that Leah and Aaron have done, because we have to rewrite the ordinance, they did it with the comprehensive plan, is they've had an outside consulting firm. But along with that, and particularly this coming Thursday, we have a joint meeting with the planning board, us, and the company doing the, helping with the zoning rewrite, and we're putting all of our collective heads together. So they're getting the boards involved to try to say, "Okay, how do we rewrite this ordinance? First of all, what can we take out that superfluous we don't need anymore? And what can we turn something a little different so maybe it protects us in the future from something just coming in carte blanche?" Because it used to be, the ordinances from the state used to state that if something is not listed in the ordinance, it's not allowed. Now, the state says, "If it's not written in your ordinance, it's allowed."
Oh, wow. Okay, that's a big shift. That's a philosophical shift.
That's a big shift. Right, right, right. You can't go by that anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Wow.
So I think that's a wonderful way to do it, is to involve the people that have to deal with it after it's written.
Well, I am very impressed to hear your story, the role that I feel like you are playing, which is really, thank you. Thank you for doing this, you and the entire team. We have just about a minute. Is there anything you want to say to our viewers about zoning, just to leave them with some closing thoughts?
I won't be around forever, okay? And I don't want to become that curmudgeon that people say, "Oh, he's been on there too long." And someday, I'll step away, as will others. And I want to encourage the younger people in this town to step forward, take on a role of something like this, help your town do something for it.
Learn about your town.
Learn about your town. The history you learn, even at my age, living here my whole life, there's still things I learn.
I love it.
Still things you don't know. And it's amazing, there's a lot of history in this town, and yeah, to preserve it is a beautiful thing. It really is.
Oh, Jim, wow. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for having me.
Yes, I really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
My guest has been Jim Knott, our Chair of the Zoning Board of Review. Thanks very much. We'll see you next time on Portsmouth This Week.